Good evening, everyone in council. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Bedford City Council of Monday, September 21st, 2020. Thank you all for being here. If you would please, would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Fluharty?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
A council, you have the minutes of the work session of September 8th and the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th. And I believe it's our wish to table them because there was a slight mix up in getting the correct minutes to counsel. So if I could have a motion for tabling the minutes of the work session of September 8th by Janutus, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And we also want to table the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th, 2020. Can I have a motion to do so by Miesak, second by Rhodes? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Under old business, ordinance number 9807-20. An ordinance amending ordinance number 6950-97, section 1341.19, entitled Removal of Weeds by Owner Occupant Notice of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bedford in Declaring an Emergency. And I believe it's our wish to put that on second reading and can I have a motion as such? By Rhodes, second by Saunders. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And ordinance number 9809-20. An ordinance rezoning permanent parcel numbers. 812-04-001, 812-04-002, 812-04-003, 812-04-004, 812-04-040, 812-03-012, and 812-03-013. Vocated a Harrison Street described herein from I-1 to B-2A classification and declaring an emergency. Glad when John's back here to read these. And can I have a motion for suspension? By Fluharty, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Saunders. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. About six or seven years ago, at the end of Harrison Street, there was an abandoned industrial building, sat vacant and abandoned for almost 20 years. The city worked with Cuyahoga County Land Bank and an adjacent property owner who was interested in acquiring that property. We applied for a grant to demolish the building. We were successful. That building came down with the understanding that it was going to be purchased by the adjacent auto dealer. On the opposite side, behind that property is a rail line. On the other side is residential. It made sense to simply expand the B-2A, being that it was going to be utilized for automotive. We're now going through the process of updating some of our zoning. We went to the law director. He recommended, under the circumstances, that we're able to move forward with the rezoning in this manner, so be, so long as three, three quarters of council agree on this rezoning. That's correct.
Any questions on that? Seeing none. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yeah.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And reports, Mr. Malice?
Thank you, Mayor. A few items I'd like to just mention. First and foremost, I want to give kudos to Bedford Downtown Alliance, Matt Stewart, Graffiti Hart, everybody that was involved in the mural downtown. It was tremendous, and the artists, obviously. It was tremendous and I think very appreciative from, from our standpoint of, of all of your efforts in bringing that to downtown. So well done on that project. Couple of items, our fire department is continuing to work on the hydrant flushing, so you'll see that throughout town. In economic development, we're looking at two specific grants. Those grants involve two major projects. The one is imminent, we're going to have to, one way or another, we're going to be doing a major project down Broadway next year in 2021. That project's going to involve replacement of the water line from Five Points all the way down approaching Union. We're going to be doing curb restoration, curb work, and electrical upgrades. Our hope is that we'll apply for issue two funding. But regardless, that project needs to happen next year because ODOT is planning the resurfacing of Broadway in the, in the near future. So we're starting that process now internally and we'll be submitting that application. We're also looking at a planning grant, as I mentioned in my correspondence to council through NOACA, and that planning grant is, will help with the bridge project that we continue to look for funding for. With NOACA, before you can obtain any type of implementation money from NOACA, you have to go through their planning process, and this is that grant. So we are, we're going to look at submitting that piece. Just want to give everybody, you know, mention for everybody out there, please take a look at our website, social media, specifically all of the programs and events that's going on down at Parks and Recreation. Lot of good things that came out last week, well done to that, to the staff. And we also have a Halloween event that's planned for October, following all guidelines that are issued. It's going to be a little different this year, but take a look at it, sign up, and obviously take advantage of all those other programs that, that's happening down there. We do have our second annual shred day, and that's taking place this weekend, September 26th, from nine to 12. You'll need to stay in your vehicle, similar to the event that we had earlier this year. And we'll have staff there to assist, to assist everyone with their items to be shredded, following all guidelines. And again, those two events were fully paid for through a grant that the staff acquired. So well do, well done to them. And I just want to give a, another congratulations. I'm sure he's going to mention it, but Frank, the, the notice received from the auditor estate, well done, well done to all your staff. I'm sure you're going to touch on that, so I don't want to take your thunder there. So, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Montello, law director.
You're muted. I had no report. I'd just like to thank, or congratulate Frank and his staff and the administration for their award that I'm sure Frank will explain to you in a second. So congrats, Frank, good job.
Hey, thank you. Finance director, Mr. Gambosi.
All right, we'll touch base with that first. Yeah, there, Keith Faber, the auditor state, released a, a news report in regards to entities that received the auditor state award with distinction. It's a separate award in regards to getting a very clean audit. That means you've done everything on the highest standards, everything came out clean with no citations, no findings, no relevant anything to speak of. So we, we ourselves are in good company with eight others only in the state that they released. So it's a very high honor. We haven't had this award in quite a while, but it's good to see that. I was kind of surprised, I didn't really realize it was out there. But congratulations to the whole city. Great job, well done on the finances, let's put it that way. Second item I've been working on, of course, we'll have an ordinance on that tonight, is the second round of the distribution of the CARES Act funds. City received that $190,000 plus in regards to the coronavirus and CARES and assisting us with all the expenditures we had to do with disinfecting and cleaning and materials and supplies and equipment and so forth that the city did. So we will be asking council to pass an order tonight in that regards to go ahead and allow ourselves to earmark those costs and money for those goods that we are, and items that we have already spent in regards to the fight and the coronavirus to keep our employees safe as well as all our facilities and to the public. That's the end of my report this evening. So this evening, I'll ask that you pass ordinance A and B. B is the rate reduction for disabled persons and senior citizens. It's the program which we have everybody apply under so that we can process all the applications for January 1st. Other than that, we'll put the other items on first reading. Thank you.
Frank, again, thank you and your staff there for a job well done. You continue to keep placing your bar higher and higher every year.
Yeah, it's really tough to beat that.
And, and you achieve it. And that's just amazing work goes on with the small staff you have there. And, and we certainly appreciate it. And I hope it gets out to the citizens that the work that gets done here is quite remarkable. And again.
We have a great staff, as you know, and they do an excellent job. So, and we lead the way in many aspects in our department to help others. So keep that in mind too, as we go through this, setting the example. But thank you for that.
Well, no, thank you. Okay, council reports, Mrs. Spinks?
Yeah, good evening to everybody, and tomorrow is the first day of fall, so happy fall to everybody. As I like to say where I'm coming from, happy fall, y'all. Like to see those signs up here, too. Yeah, Frank, thank you and your department for all, what you do, we appreciate it. Mike, are you there? I see the city still and I did, don't see you. I have questions to act, there you are, Mike. Over the past weekend, past week, a lot of phone calls and, and have seen it for myself, been out walking because the weather's been so great. The speeding cars down Grand, Willard, I know Don Haselman, his ward too, because I was talking in front of my Liz over there. People that are not even attempting to stop at any of these signs. We've got more and more little kids that have had three families moved on Grand and Natalie, they have little kids and, you know, of course, I was raised in the country, so I didn't play in the street, because we didn't have very much traffic. But, you know, kids getting out on their skateboards and kids, and then we have a lot of elderly, some want going to get hit. Because these cars that are speeding down here, they're not even attempting to do, I, I've complained about this way before I was even on council. I don't want it to take an accident for something to be done. I know we've talked about the flashing signs. I just want to get the message out there. You know, Northville does it in front of the casino. You don't dare speed, so, yeah, because they will get you. Oakwood has a thing, you don't dare speed through there because they will get you. And several other things, Glen Willow, they have, yeah, they'll catch you, you don't. We've got to get the message out there that it's not okay to go flying down our streets in Bedford. We've got to do, I know the guys are out there, I know they're busy, I know they're taking in, I've seen the, you know, the reports and stuff, but this weekend, it was like yesterday, I was out in the yard talking to my neighbor, where's it, they saw us standing right there and didn't even attempt to slow down. They had to be doing 40 miles an hour. And of course, I yelled at them, the neighbors yell at them, and we almost, our residents had almost got hit again the other day. She was crossing the street and here comes her car flying down Grand and, yeah.
I, can I add something to Sandy's? I can tell you that during the mural, we had an incident where a gentleman flew past those artists. We all yelled, that gentleman turned around and yelled at us.
Oh, yeah.
And we're not talking nice words. I got caught a lot of things that I shouldn't have been called. And the artists actually felt threatened. This is kind of the attitude.
Yeah, I've told you, Mike, I had one, he stopped. And my neighbors across the street, there are two big guys that live across the street, they came out, this guy was, yeah, I was, you know, looking for somewhere, because, yeah, it's, it's, our kids are out there, right, seniors are out there, and it's just something has to be done. I, like I said, if, again, I have complained and complained and complained, and after this weekend, with one of my residents almost getting hit again, and one of these kids, you know, you know, I've talked to the kids, just be careful, because, you know, I don't want to yell at the kids. I love seeing kids out playing, you know. But our kids should be safe to ride their bikes or go across the street or run and play across the street. They shouldn't have to worry about a speeding car and the big trucks are coming through again, too, and talking semis. And their signs up, and like I said, it's just like, if you don't enforce the law, what do you do? Wait till you have a bad accident, so.
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't say that we're not enforcing the law, I mean, we, but understood.
End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. Yes, it's the fall equinox, that was a good reminder, because we, we measure the, the year with the different instances, and this is now our three quarters year through a very trying year. And I'd like to congratulate the city of Bedford and also the Bedford Downtown Alliance for doing what they can in these times. They're, they're making an effort, so I, I appreciate that. And of course, congratulations to Frank, as always. He always seems to pull these things off, but we, we love him because we always ask if, if everything's okay money-wise when we make our decisions, and he's the guy who, who really knows, so we rely on him heartily. You mentioned the speeding, and I was just wondering why we don't have that speed sign out? We should have that out circulating through the town always, because it collects data that the police utilizes. Is that out currently?
Wally, that, that device failed, it's, it's damaged and it's not worthwhile to get that repaired. That happened earlier this year. A couple of weeks ago, I authorized us to purchase more devices. We, we have more than one that we've acquired. They're going to be moved around and those will be up very, very shortly.
Yeah, because they, you know, they work to a certain extent. I mean, people say when the sign's there, they slow down, so at least it's, at least they slow down then. And then also, it gives the opportunity to do some recording and, and really, you know, get a, get an idea of how much speeding there, there really is in various areas. So I, I always think that that's a good thing. And I know it's just a very small thing for, for this matter. And I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Matt Stewart and, as well as the Bedford Downtown Alliance for the Underground Railroad mural. I mean, that is a big hit, and I have to say, as a little kid growing up in Bedford, hearing about Bedford's history with the Underground Railroad, I, I think that was always something I was, I was so proud of. So seeing it displayed like that, and it's our heritage and our history, something that we should be very proud of. And I, I think it's really been welcomed, so congratulations to everyone who worked on that. And, but, end of report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to congrats, congratulations to Frank and his staff and also the downtown Bedford Alliance for all the work they've been doing down there. It's been great to see this progress. Downtown has really gone a long ways, or has come a long ways. Voting for my award has been finally finalized, it's at Ellenwood. So the people that are used to going to the Bill of Hearts will now have to go to Ellenwood. So my, my recommendation would be to get it in by mail, otherwise you're going to be, I think four, four wards out of six are voting in Ellenwood now.
Five of the six are, only Ward Four isn't.
The school. The school.
There's one at the high school, one, yeah.
Not me.
Well, anyhow.
Ward Four is the only one not at Ellenwood.
Right.
So that means there's going to be a lot of people there, so I advise people to do it by mail, that'd be my recommendation. Plus, a lot of people are going to do it anyhow by mail. But, so that's where they're voting. So if people don't know, if they need to find out, they can get ahold of me or anybody else through City Hall. I'm sure they're going to send out cards like they always do, the Board of Elections, to let people know where they're voting. Or not Frank, but Mike, these, where's this company at that's supposed to come out and do the sewer project in my ward?
We gave them a notice to proceed, their initial date that they were to start was last week. They're waiting, per the, per the requirements, they have to have Cuyahoga County, there's, has to be a sign installed. They're waiting to install that sign. I have Clint, he reached out to them today, actually, because I, we knew they weren't out last week. Once that sign has to get installed, but it, it should be very, very soon. That, I know it sounds minimal, but part of this being funded fully through a Cuyahoga County grant, though, that proper advertising has to take place. So they're working to install that, they are going to start, and it'll start on Henry. I will have an update, because like I said, Clint did reach out to them today, and I'll get that update in the morning at staff meeting.
Okay, and last here, I want to know, what do you, do we have any, what's going on with these kids that are at home during the day and they're out roaming around the streets? Is there, they're supposed to be in school. I know they're doing it by video.
Well, not, not, it, it, I don't know the specifics and, and what specific school they're, they're enrolled at. I mean, some of them, even though they're, they're remote, it doesn't mean that they're supposed to be remote for eight hours a day. Some of them are merely given assignments and they can log on at any time. That's specific to their school and, and who they're enrolled at. So it doesn't necessarily mean they can't, you know, they, they have to be on a computer, like, you know, I, I don't know the specifics for what they're enrolled at.
So there's no, no written thing for this, for these kids out roaming around right now? So, all right, well, I'm going to meet with the superintendent Thursday anyhow, I'll ask her that same question. And let, let her know that some of these kids are out at 10 o'clock and, and during the day, you know, playing. So I just want to know. Anyhow, that's it, end of report.
Thank you. This is Miesak.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everything's good with you, our prayers are with you as we speak. Being one of the most, I speak a lot about a lot of things, but I come from the Fast and the Furious drag strip, right down here on San Francisco and Button Road. We've touched about that before, Mike, it is a problem. I have more than one visually impaired person in my area. There's three from Glendale, there's two from Glendale, and one in my own personal home. He doesn't go out, he doesn't want to be a target. But I do have a beautiful lady that walks her service dog every day. This lady cleans up after her dog, but when she goes across that street, God forbid, one of these guys that don't care about the neighbors flies up this street. That would be the worst thing I'd have to face. Other than that, other than raising the Renner Colony Clubs, they're actually cleaning up their grounds. They've taken one of the swimming pools and supposedly they're supposed to make it into a doggy park. I don't know for sure, but that's what I heard. Mel's not been around, so I haven't heard any other complaints about it or about Colony Club itself. The gas stations sparing the weather well on their own. And I would like to say, congratulations to Frank and Heather, job well done Saturday. I have one comment before I even end, end my report. I also wanted to say that we, we listen to a lot of the radio because of my husband's vision. Bedford, I mean, Ohio usually is not in anything of the top categories. I was so excited the other day, I called Mike. In Ohio, out of the top 10 states throughout the United States, Ohio placed ninth. Not at the bottom, but ninth in the top 10 for teachers to educate our students. I think that was quite an honor, and I believe Mike is going to let Ms. Seligko know what I told him about that. I think that was an honor. What I wanted to say was, in closing on the ceremony for the mural, which is just great, it did just makes me be proud again of our city. September 11th was the day before. That was a day, Bob Reed and I were, where I worked at US Bank, whenever the, when the horror started. We ended that day on a bad note, and, and that's very touching to a lot of people. But as I concluded, on the 11th is a day of remembrance of something that was very painstaking. These kids put their heart into that mural that left, left us with a new blood to the tree of life. And they, those three kids deserve every bit of life they can to keep on continuing what they do best. Thank you.
I'll let them know.
Paula, thanks for the well wishes, but it was my mom that had some issues, nothing life threatening or anything like that. I had a physical three weeks ago, I'm, I'm good to go, so.
I was watching your face, you were worried. I had, mother had, had to worry about you.
Yeah, but thank you anyhow.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming, glad to have you here. So I wanted to start the evening off, there's someone in our city that does a lot for the city, and I, I'd like to make sure he gets called out every once in a while. Billy Dar takes care of our commons. And the garden club just donated some months to the, the city for decorating. He put them out as a thanks to us, as the garden club, he put up a beautiful display. I actually had a couple of calls today about it, where people were like, wow, it's really gorgeous, so thank you, Billy, for all you do. You know, thank you for making our downtown look absolutely amazing, really, City Hall, downtown, everywhere you take care of, really. So, so thank you for that. I also wanted to congratulate Frank on his auditor of state award of distinct, or with distinction. You know, thank you for all the hard work you guys do in the tax department, we all appreciate it, keeping track of our budget, because I know it's not easy, so. I did want to let everybody know, we have our next first Friday coming up, that is on Friday, October 2nd. The theme this week for our grab and go bags, or that week, will be Family Fun Night. So we'll have some games that you can play with your family in there, or play with your friends. Of course, there will always be meals provided, and lineup starts at 6:00 PM. So if you can join us for a drive-through, we'd appreciate seeing you. And that will be our last first Friday for the year, will resume, resume again in March. be our last First Friday for the year. We'll resume again in March, for the March for Art. So please join us to get this one last thing in before winter sets in. Ugh. I also wanted to let you know, all the residents know, that our volunteer meeting for the Bedford Downtown Alliance is this Thursday, 7:00 PM at DePompey's. We work on projects like the mural that everybody's been talking about. We have lots of projects that need chairpeople to run them up. You know, you come into an organization like Bedford Downtown Alliance, and the fact of matter is that you're getting a lot of leeway in planning a project your way. So if you can come in, and if you're looking to just help out a little, one hour a month is the thing that we're touting right now. If you can do one hour a month, we'd like to see you. If you'd like to chair a project, if you're looking to improve your resume, all of these things are possible at the Bedford Downtown Alliance. So we're currently looking for a lead so that we can- or a chairperson so that we can resume our Puka pickups in the downtown area. And then we're also looking for someone who can do social media for us. That sounds like anything that you can do out there. Please call us or email us at stories@bedforddowntown.org and let us know. And we'll get you going on some volunteer work for Bedford Downtown Alliance. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
Yes. First off, I want to publicly give my condolences to the Peters family. Al Peters passed away last week. He was a longtime Service Department employee. He also volunteered for almost every activity for many, many years that took place here in Bedford, from the food program to the festivals to everything else. You may probably more know his son Jeff, who retired from the sewage treatment plant here, what is it, a year or so ago. But Al passed away this past week, and we've lost another one of our old timers in town. Vic may have known him because he lived on Henry Street. He was actually my neighbor when I was a little kid. But he is gone. So I want to give my condolences to the Peters family. Next, I've had some inquiries, this is for Mike, about when the leaf program starts. Since we have such an increase in number of people who are parking on the streets now, how are we gonna be able to pick up the leaves? Because some streets are parked from one end to the other. It's gonna make leaf pickup very difficult.
Well, I mean, I always joke, leaf pickup starts typically when the leaves start falling underground. And they will work, I mean, most likely that's gonna be sometime mid-October, I would imagine. But it also depends on when the weather really starts to drop. Typically, our crews have worked through it. If it means, you know, trying to rake some of those out into the street or further up the tree lawn, we've always managed. If there's an area that we have to notify someone and circle back, we'll do that. We try to go above and beyond. We'll- if there's an area that is significantly in interest, then we'll address it with those homes. But we'll do our best to collect them.
Yeah, well, it just seems like this year, more people are parking on the street than ever. And it's okay to work around one or two cars here and there, but if a whole street parks up, it's gonna make it a little bit more difficult. So they wanted me to bring that up now so that we can look at it possibly before it becomes a problem later. We've already got that problem with Kimball, of course, with their cans. And I've got pictures showing half the street with Kimball leaving their cans in the street because they can't get in around to park cars. So we still have an issue there. But hopefully, we can resolve some of this.
And I did just to touch on that. We did reach out to Kimball, and we mentioned that concern of them leaving cans in the street. Obviously, they can't do that. But we also had asked them, and we've asked them a few times, have you- do you have issues? Are there chronic issues or issue where you can't service a home? And they've told us. They put that out to the drivers, and the drivers have come back with that they have it. Now, if that means they're leaving the cans in the street, that's a problem for us. And we did express that concern. But we have reached out to Kimball regarding trash collection.
Yeah, well, they'll pull them out so they can grab them with the arm, but then they just set them right next to the parked car usually. So if the parked car leaves, it's in the street. So but hopefully, we can resolve that. And we don't know who we're gonna have as garbage pickup in another year, probably anyway. But as far as the speeding is concerned, as several people, Sandy and Paula have mentioned, yes, we do have a problem with speeding. People don't stop for stop signs. They don't care anymore. I've got people walking on rolators because they need to get out and walk. And, you know, there is a concern that somebody may get hit. Now, it's amazing, at least in my neighborhood, and I'm sure Sandy has the same problem in hers, that nobody has really clobbered a deer even on our residential streets. But there's so many deer out right now because it's whatever they call it, rutting season or whatever, or mating season. They're everywhere. There's dozens of them. So somebody's gonna clip one of them one of these times, and then hopefully, they don't lose control and either hit a parked car or run into somebody's yard and hit a house. But the speedings, hopefully, if we can get some of those speed monitors or whatever it is up, maybe that will help slow them down a little bit. But we do have a speed problem. But it's not just here either. The State Highway Patrol put out last week that they have pulled over more cars since March doing 100 plus on the turnpike. So people have just totally disregarded any speed limits anymore. They're just doing whatever. So we're not the only ones facing this issue. But let's hope we can get it corrected, like several other communities, that you darn well don't do more than two or three over the speed limit, because they will pull you over. And they're notorious for being known for that. So heck, I was on Broadway up in the auto district and in that curve, and people were going over the other oncoming traffic because they were going so darn fast up Broadway in that area. So it's everywhere in the city, but it's also everywhere in the communities around us, too. So but I just had to state that, along with backing everybody up here, it is prevalent everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say again, thanks to Frank and the BDA. And as I said, at the dedication for the mural, the best thing about the project, it was led by our citizens and not by the city. It wasn't a city function. And to have private citizens step up and do these remarkable things is great. And I know we're gonna see some more in the future. So thanks in advance for those. It's good to see when citizens get involved making our city better. That's just great. It's just great. And I also wanted to mention, for our hearing of the citizens, if you have a question or a comment, email it to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Thank you. Let's get down to business. Ordinance number 9815-20. Ordinance appropriating the city's coronavirus relief fund payment received pursuant to amended substitute House Bill 481 to the city's COVID-19 response and directing the city manager to declare a proclamation. And I would like a suspension on that by Rhodes, second by Janudas. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yeah.
Janudas?
Yes.
Mizek or Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluhardy, second by Mizek. Frank touched on it, but-
Sure. The- this is the second round of the governor's CAREZAC funds that he distributed out to the cities and localities throughout Ohio. And in this second distribution, the city received $190,573.53. What I ask council to do tonight is to pass this ordinance, which allows us, under Section 1A of this ordinance, the authorized purposes for which we will be applying the costs that we have met in regards to disinfecting and council meetings, communications, social distancing, first responder personnel, administratively, dispatch personnel costs, and many other items that we have in supplies and materials and contracts that we had to do for keeping our city hall, our employees protected, as well as our buildings and staff to the public. And I ask council that they recommend passage of this ordinance this evening, because this is the second of perhaps even a third round coming up in the future.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance number 9816-20. And ordinance amending ordinance number 9725-19, codified ordinance 911.03, rate reduction for disabled persons and senior citizens for water and sewer discounts and declaring an emergency. I would like a suspension on that by Rhodes, second by Janudas. Clerk, call a roll.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Spinks.
Mayor, I'll take this one also. I'll be asking council to pass this ordinance this evening. This is the- one of the first steps we take in regards to the water discount and sewer discount for senior citizens and the disabled. We take a look at applications that will be based on their 19 income, and we factor that up by the Midwest Urban Consumer Price Index each year. This year's dollar amount is $34,366. It'll be based on the 2019 income of people filed by the last Friday in September, so that we could get this on the books of the city and discounts as of January 1st, 2021. And in line with doing so and processing applications, I ask council to pass this this evening.
Thank you. Question, Don?
Yes, Frank, is that just earned income, or is it all income, which includes retirements and all that other stuff?
It's all income and household income besides. So everybody living in a household. So it's not only one individual, it's the household income also.
Yeah, but it includes retirement income, which isn't taxable.
It includes all income, including retirement. This has nothing to do with taxes. It's in regards to the discount and income earned.
All right. Thank you.
And retirement income.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 9817-20. Being an ordinance amending ordinance number 9728-19 concerning Section 913.02 sewer rates of the codified ordinances of the city of Bedford as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. And that will- we would like to put on first reading-
It is correct.
-a motion for such. By Rhodes, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 9818-20. An ordinance replacing ordinance number 7780-05 relating to water rates, 911.01.
Mayor, if I may add, you're reading 9819 right at this point. They're out of order on the agenda. So this is ordinance 9819 you're talking about, dash 20. The other one is the senior citizen permanently disabled, which is 9818. Those two are switched on the agenda.
Right. So that's why I'm going-
So if we read, we should be reading- oh, you're right. We're reading 89. I'm sorry. My apology. My mistake. 9819-20. You are correct. Thank you. Proceed.
For once, for once, I'm-
I'm sorry. I understand.
Not a problem. Not a problem. All right. Keep me on line. So we need a motion to put that on first reading.
Correct.
By Mizek, second by Janudas. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Ordinance number 9819-20 that we switched. Being an ordinance amending ordinance number 9637-18 concerning Section 913.03 rate reduction for senior citizens and the permanently disabled of the codified ordinances of the city of Bedford as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. Again, we'd like to put that on first reading.
Correct.
And I have a motion for such by Saunders, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And finally, ordinance number 9820-20. An ordinance amending Section 351.18 truck parking in residential areas of the traffic code of the Bedford codified ordinances and declaring an emergency. And again, we would like to have a first reading on this so we can clean up some of the language. Motion for first reading by Fluhardy, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call a roll.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
No.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And now we come to that portion of the meeting of hearing of citizens. As I said, if you wish to comment, citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Mike, did we get anything?
We have not. We have not.
Okay. We'll give it a couple minutes.
You didn't get anything?
I'm sorry?
There should have been something that was sent this morning. Actually, I watched it, actually.
There was an email, but I don't believe that. I'll read it. I didn't see it. It wasn't intended for council meeting. So sorry about that. Are you referring to the- an email from a Ms. Foreman?
Yes, from her. She had a concern, and it's the same one that Vic brought up earlier. So-
Yeah, no, that's fine. I didn't know it was intended for the meeting. I thought it was just an email to myself. Those come over frequently. So an email from Maria Foreman says, "Good morning. I want to voice a concern with regard to school closures. The school closures have put the children of the city in harm's way. With schools and parks being closed, children have no safe outdoor space to play. Near my house on John, children that were previously playing in Carrollwood's playground are now playing in the empty parking lots and in the streets, which is not safe. What will the city do to help with this?" I'm not- as far as like the playground or the Carrollwood Playground, that's a school property. So I'm not sure if they have that closed off. We can reach out to the schools and see what their protocol or what their policy is regarding that to see if they can possibly open those. I know all city playgrounds, all of our tot lots- Um, I know all city playgrounds, all of our tot lots, um, they're all open. We do have specific signage that was installed at all of those playgrounds. Just advising people that, you know, we do send crews out there to clean and spray the equipment down as frequently as possible. But um, currently, under the Governor's guidelines, they're required, if they're open, um, and you're theoretically not, you know, just they're open and that's that, you're supposed to be cleaning those every hour. And we're unable to do that, um, which is just why we put the um, the signage up there saying we are cleaning it as frequently as possible, but use your own, um, you know, um, discretion or, or be cautious regarding any of the concerns surrounding the coronavirus. Um, I can, I'd be more than happy to reach out to the schools to see if we could do something. Um, one, to see if they'd be willing to reopen those specific playgrounds. Um, for instance, at Carrollwood, um, possibly Glendale, um, and um, Central. Um, I'm not sure what their policy is. I'm assuming that they are closed and that's because the schools make that decision. But all of the city playgrounds are open.
Alright, anything else, Mike?
No, and my apologies, I didn't, um, I didn't know that was intended for the council meeting.
Okay.
Um.
It, it just, it might be a good idea if we set up another email address since a lot of stuff just goes to city manager, can be. Um, you know, maybe we set up like a council at uh, bedfordohio.gov, you know, bedfordohh.gov that, you know, for questions that are meant for council meetings as opposed to just in general.
Yeah, hear that or put a tagline on for council.
Right.
You know. Okay. Nothing else? Can I have a uh, motion for adjournment? By Flu Hardy, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please. Clerk, call, yeah, there you go.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Flu Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Well, thank everyone for being here and for you at home listening and uh, have a good week.
Have a good week. See ya.